Good afternoon. It's 4:00 PM, November 2nd, which is Voting Day, Election Day. So anyway, I've called a meeting to order the Planning Commission for the 4 o'clock meeting. I'd like to request that a confirmation from the Kansas Open Meeting Act and required notice have been properly provided.
We'll look to Allison.
Oh, I can confirm the packet was posted and required notice of the meeting was provided.
Okay, have a roll call, please.
I'll go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilmore?
I'm here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz? Commissioner Waters?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sell? Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Bernhardt?
Here.
Chair Hay?
Here.
So based on our roll call, we have five commission members in attendance and we have met our open meetings requirements. So we may now conduct today's meeting and proceed with our agenda.
Okay. Everybody looked at the minutes, the minutes. I need a recommendation for approval of the minutes.
I move, we approve the minutes of the October 19th, 2021 meeting.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All approved, same, any disapprovals, say no. Okay. Okay, move into new business.
We have one public hearing item for you today and that is a conditional use permit application. That's been filed by Samantha Fairchild and her request is to convert a licensed daycare at 808 Rainbow Drive to a group daycare home. And Mr. Hers will have that report for you.
Thank you, Dean. So the subject property of the proposed conditional use permit for group daycare home is 808 Rainbow Drive and it's highlighted on the aerial photo on the screen here. And the particular zoning of that property is R2. And the predominant development pattern of the neighborhood is townhome style, single attached dwellings, where you have a single building that's connected and has a shared wall. And the lots are individual. And so what we're looking at is looking at the particular site, the specific site, and whether or not it is suitable for a group daycare home. The primary difference between a group daycare home and a licensed daycare is that a group daycare home has the ability to have two extra children for up to 12 total children, where a licensed daycare can have up to 10. In addition to the two extra children, there's also a requirement that a daycare assistant be onsite. And this is a different type of home occupation from our other home occupations that you can have in the city of Salina as there is a off-site employee that comes onto the site. So the city of Salina does have a home occupation section within the zoning ordinance that allows for very limited types of businesses to take place outside of an individual's residence, if it's inside the actual dwelling, as long as there are no outside employees. This is one of those exceptions and that's why it requires a conditional use permit. So this particular situation, the applicant, who's also the homeowner, has operated a licensed daycare home out of this residence since August of 2020. And in that time, she's had, has not had any complaints from any of the neighbors, nor has she had any issues with the life safety aspects from either the Health Department, Building Services, and dealing with the building code, or the Fire Department. As part of this, this application, there was a site visit conducted and that site visit consisted of the Health Department from the county, as well as our Building Services Division within Development Services that looked at the building code and those safety requirements. And then the Fire Department looking at the fire code and those safety requirements. And this property didn't meet all of those requirements for a group daycare home. So what you're looking at is the suitability of the site in relation to the neighborhood. And so we'll get into that. Looking into the compliance with the zoning ordinance requirements, this is the R2 district. And in your packet on page three, there is a table showing the zoning requirements and the bulk regulation requirements in the R2 district. And this particular property does meet those requirements currently. And the applicant states that they are not proposing any physical changes to the property. The only change that they have made is a, an extension of a driveway wing in order to add additional off-street parking to accommodate the additional daycare provider that's required for this type of group daycare use. The lot itself is 70 feet wide by, by 116 feet deep, so a little over 8,000 square feet. And the structure itself was built in 1962 as part of the Air Force Base, the United Air Force Base at the time. There is an existing driveway on, on the site that the applicant has, has added to. So I have some aerial, or some photographs here that show the driveway. It's a 10-foot drive that is 39 feet from the garage to the curb. There is no sidewalk here. So it does appear that the driveway is longer than it, than it actually is because there is no sidewalk that kind of delineates where the property lines are. Here's a zoomed-in photograph. This is the east side where the driveway has been added. And you can see that there's, there's a setback of over nine feet between the garage and the property line. The fence is on the property line. We do have a survey that shows that of the neighbor's property. There's a zoomed-in, look at that as well. And then what the applicant has done is they have, have added a driveway wing. So this is, this would be the only physical modification that's been made to the property is the addition of this driveway wing in order to add additional off-street parking. So we look at welfare and convenience of the public. The applicant says that her daycare would provide more families with care and benefit additional people within the neighborhood in the Salina community. And staff would agree that the, that daycare is a occupation of need within our community. And the site visit did confirm that the site is, does meet all of the requirements for daycares, for group daycares, as well as licensed daycares. Looking at injury to the surrounding property, the applicant again notes that no physical changes are going to be added and that she's been operating here for over a year, over 15 months, and hasn't had any issues with, with any of the neighbors or remaining in compliance with her licensed daycare. There is an outdoor play area in the back that she currently has. There's also a six-foot tall solid wood fence that runs along the west property line, the north property line, and a four-foot chain link on the east property line. We have some photographs of that that we'll, we'll go through here. So this is the backyard. There is a play area, trampoline, kind of playhouse set, swing set, entertainment structure there for kids. There's a close zoomed-in version of that. And then here are some photographs of the yard, just to, just to give you a feel for what that fenced-in backyard play area is like. Looking at domination of the neighborhood, the, the use of the property isn't changing. It's currently being used as a personal residence and will continue to be used as a personal residence. And it's currently used as a licensed daycare, so the, the daycare use will also remain the same. The addition that we would see is additional potential of two children and an additional individual to, to take care of the property. And so what that would mean is that any change that would be experienced would be a minimal increase in traffic potentially. And what the applicant is proposing is to have parents drop off their kids at, in the driveway. So we have a vehicle in the driveway now and there's going to be a driveway wing in the, in the other photograph that I showed you. And there's, there's substantial area here, or at least sufficient area, where an individual can pull into the driveway behind the two vehicles that would be parked and load and unload children outside of the street. Now, they would be hanging into the right way a little bit because the, the property line's, you know, up in here, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't appear that way because there is no sidewalk and we would not be blocking any sidewalks. So there you'd have three parking spaces with a potential of a loading, unloading area with the, with the area behind the vehicles that are parked in the driveway. And that kind of addresses the off-street parking as well. So with that, staff would note that conditional uses are approved for a particular location and a particular property. And they are not usually determined by who the actual applicant is or, or the particular person. And so the, the approval of a conditional use permit does run with the land unless you were to make a specific condition that it doesn't. And you've done that in the past where there's been a conditional use permit, where you felt like maybe it was kind of on the fringe of being a conducive location for the conditional use permit. And so you've made a condition that if, if the applicant were to sell or cease their conditional use permit, that it would not carry on. So that means if a new owner were to buy the property, they would not have to, or they would not have a conditional use permit. They would have to come to this board for a new conditional use permit for a group daycare home. Where typically, once you approve a group daycare home, it runs with the land and a new owner can come in and continue the group daycare home. So we do have a number of alternatives for you on page six. Number one is you could approve the conditional use application estimated upon finding that the requirements of this Salina code have been satisfied. Number two, you could approve the conditional use permit application subject to specific conditions that you think are, are necessary in order to reduce any negative impacts on the surrounding neighbors. Number three, you could postpone consideration of the application if additional information is needed. And number four, you could deny the proposed conditional use permit if you do not find that the appropriate findings of fact can be made to justify approving the conditional use permit. Staff has been out to the site along with Building Services, our Fire Department, Health Department, and it does meet all of the requirements with the new addition of the driveway that the applicant has recently added. It does meet all the requirements and staff does feel it could be a benefit to the community to approve the conditional use permit. So if you, if you decide to approve the conditional use permit, there are a number of findings that we have posted as potential findings on page seven. And we also have a potential condition that, that we usually put on a conditional use permit for group daycare homes as a standard clause. And that is that no more than 12 children may be cared for at any one time in accordance with state standards for group daycare homes. So that limitation is part of the state requirements, but we, we typically have added that to a conditional use permit just to make sure everybody is real clear on, on what that limitation is. So with that, staff would entertain any questions that, that you might have.
Okay, any questions for staff? Dust, I got one thing. You know, you said licensed daycare, then a, um, this daycare does not need to be licensed? Or is it, does it keep the license it's gotten? We're just giving it a conditional use permit with?
Right, so that's a fair question. And, and what it comes down to is the state has different classifications or tiers of daycare licensing. And currently, the applicant has what we call a licensed daycare. And so that classification of daycare is permitted as a permitted use in residential districts as long as the operator of that daycare lives, lives in that dwelling that she's providing, he or she is providing that daycare from. And so right now, for the last 15 months, the applicant has been running a licensed daycare from this location. Prior to that, she had a licensed daycare at her previous residence. And so she has been operating as a licensed daycare. And in order to move up in intensification or a higher classification of daycare, going from licensed daycare to group daycare, it requires a conditional use permit. And so that's, that's why you're here is because we are increasing the intensity of the, of the group daycare, meaning we're adding the potential for two additional children. We're also adding a requirement where there is a assistant care provider that will be coming to the site that doesn't live at the residence. And so they will be commuting and their employment will be in a residential home. So we're making it a little more commercial, if you will. And so that's why it's a, a conditional use permit.
Okay, so it is, it is actually licensed then?
It's licensed currently and she's wanting to change, change her classification from a licensed daycare to a group daycare. So yes, to answer your question, in a shorter fashion, yes.
She will be licensed, it's just a different license.
Different type of license.
Yeah, and there, there's actually a higher standard for group daycare than there is for license.
Anybody else got anything for staff? Is the applicant available or?
Yes, the applicant has joined us via Zoom and so they are here online if they, if you have any questions.
Okay, if she doesn't have any questions?
We can.
Is there anybody else online or anybody else?
It looks like she's muted, so.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, anybody from the public has got any comment?
I do have a question for her. So I believe Dustin said that you had a licensed daycare prior to this location?
Yes.
And how long had you provided daycare at that location?
Um, from May of 2020 until August of 2020 when we moved here.
So you're just over a year providing daycare overall, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then do you have children already set up for this if it's approved to go to the 12th?
Um, yeah, I have a wait list, so I'm just waiting to find out so I can contact people.
Gotcha, and then just one more question then. So for your assistant, do you have just one full-time? Or do you have, not sure how the state mandates, is it one full-time? Or do you have different people that are part-time to handle that assistant position?
Um, right now I just have one.
Okay, and then have they provided daycare previously too then?
No.
And then are they required to have any type of licensing or background for the group daycare?
Um, they have to go through the health assessment, like I did, the fundamental 18-hour course. And then they have to have the background check, fingerprinting, and TB tests, all of like the health aspects of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions for staff, we're bringing it back to the commission for a recommendation?
Just to clarify that we do, we do not have anyone from the public on, on Zoom to, to comment, just so that's in the record.
Well, I, I mean, I think group daycares, I mean, again, providing more daycare is benefit to the community. I think the direction I would go is approval, but I would limit it to this applicant instead of the property itself. And then also do the amendment for no more than 12 that we have on page seven.
I agree.
So nobody's in disagreement. I'm going to make a motion that we approve application CU 21-9 with the condition listed, or listed on page seven, that no more than 12 children may be cared for at any time in accordance with state standards and also that the conditional use permit is for this applicant only.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion passes 5-0. Okay.
For our second item is an administrative item and it is a proposed final plat of the Lakeview Estates Edition Number Two. And if you'll recall, on September 21st, we had a fairly full agenda. And at that meeting, you made a recommendation that this 34-acre site be annexed into the city. You made a recommendation that the zoning of the property be changed from agricultural to a combination of Plan Development District R2.5, Plan Development District R2, R2.5, and C1 for office use. And you also approved a preliminary development plan for an assisted living facility in the northwest corner of the site, including a curb cut on Ohio Street. And you approved a preliminary plat layout for this property subject to a number of conditions, which we have laid out for you on page two and three of your report. Following that recommendation, the items that went to the City Commission, they have annexed this property fully into the city limits. The zoning of the property, the zoning change was approved on first reading, subject to plating. And so during the same week that you acted on the preliminary plat, a final plat application was filed on that Friday. And the applicant is requesting approval of a 12-lot subdivision of this 34-acre tract. And the property, as you can see, is bordered by a large drainage ditch and reserves at Prairie Glen on the north. It's got the Knox Sand Pit Lake on the east. The Stone Lake Edition is, borders the property on the south. And then we have Ohio Street bordering the property on the west. The property is bordered by the city limits on three sides. And so now we have this remaining island here that we'll have to address at some point with those owners. But they have received notice of all the proceedings here and we have not heard any feedback or comments from the owners of those properties. Back in 2016, there was an amendment to the city's subdivision regulations that addressed improvements to perimeter streets and direct access perimeter streets. The good news in this case is that Ohio Street is the direct access perimeter street that provides access to this subdivision. And there is one proposed street connection, direct access street connection to Ohio Street. And so we also have two secondary means of emergency access into the subdivision. This right here is an emergency access road that is near final improvement to provide access from Ohio into the north end of Stone Lake. It also provides access into this site. And then there's a, a fire access road off the north edge of Shoreline Drive that would also provide a secondary way in. So this has one public street connection, which would be right, right in here. And we have secondary access from Ohio and a secondary access via the Stone Lake Edition. So we think that those meet the subdivision regulations criteria. As you can tell, Ohio Street's been improved to full city standards. No further perimeter street improvements are needed. We're not in a situation like we have on Holmes Road where we're wrestling with the question of how to improve a, a perimeter street as Ohio has already been improved. So we have 729 feet of frontage on Ohio north of the houses. We have a single street access into the property. We would note, and we'll ask Mr. Biquist that this is his final answer. But the original preliminary plat, these were referred to as Anchor Drive and Boy Lane, North-South and East-West. And now the proposal is that the East-West Street would be Lakeway Drive and Evening Bay Drive. And so it doesn't appear that these would directly duplicate any existing street names. And we did want to point out that there is a Lakeview Drive in Eastway, Eastview Estates, just to the north of this property. And so, just so you're aware, you may want to take into consideration whether Lakeview and Lakeway are, are so similar that that could potentially cause confusion. But you, as the Planning Commission, have the discretion to approve or disapprove proposed street names. But we do think that the street access and emergency access proposed complies with the subdivision regulations. The access along Ohio Street, except for the approved curb cut and the street opening would be restricted. We just wanted to address, addressing briefly, back when there was nothing out here, this large 100-plus acre parcel had a parcel address of 2601 South Ohio. Mr. Biquist's residence is tucked back over here. And so if you look at the address sequencing, we have a house here is 2645, 2655. And the driveway and the access to this house should probably, in sequence, be a higher number, something like 2665 or 2675. So we would like to work with Mr. Biquist to surrender his 2601 address, which should fit right here for the assisted living facility. And then we would readdress his residence in, in sequence of the others. The plan is to divide this. There's, there's 13 total lots in two blocks. There's nine lots in Block One, three for the assisted living facility and future expansions. There's six townhome lots backing up to the Sand Pit Lake. And there's four lots in Block Two, one for an office site, one for residential apartments. And then there's a fourth lot, which is designated as an access easement for Mr. Biquist's residence and also as emergency access into Stone Lake Edition in this subdivision. So our zoning and subdivision regulations require that every building lot have frontage on and access to an approved public or private street. All the lots that are shown on this plat conform with that requirement. The width, depth, and area dimensions conform with all the zoning classifications that are being requested. We don't see any difficulties in being able to issue building permits on any of the proposed lots once the public improvements are in place. We did want to point out that you have these lots here for townhomes and there is an interceptor sewer easement that lies between the front of those lots and the sand pit. But we do think those lots are deep enough to accommodate a townhome footprint. And if you'll recall, you approved a, an adjustment of the front setback to allow those townhomes to move closer to the North-South Street. We have water sewer improvements in place. The, the Sand Pit Lake essentially serves as a large regional detention basin for 175-acre area in, in South Salina. So instead of paying or having to have their own stormwater detention, Lakeview Estates is subject to a impact fee, where they would pay a fee to essentially purchase. where they would pay a fee to essentially purchase storage capacity in the Sand Pit Lake. And so that was done, this Eastview Estates, also done by Mr. Byquist. It does not have a detention pond. The reserves at Prairie Glen doesn't have a detention pond. All of these properties have paid an impact fee and drain into here. Even the small Piercey Edition right here drains into that lake and is paid an impact fee. We also have electricity and natural gas in place. The fire protection will be provided by Station Three at Belmont and Key Avenue. This would be in the South High and South Middle School enrollment areas. And even though we have Jerry Ivy Park in the vicinity, it's considered to be a community park and not a neighborhood park. And so there would be a park service fee collected on residential permits on this property. So the plan, there's two options here under streets and traffic. And one option would be this street gets built, it's connected here. There is a pavement connection here, and there's a street connection that goes here in Stone Lake and ties in with Shoreline Drive. That would require consent and cooperation with the developers of Stone Lake Edition. They would have to convert the emergency access easement into a street right of way and participate in building a street. If that does not occur, then what would happen is that Evening Bay Drive would terminate in essentially a hammerhead right here, where it would come down and then emergency vehicles or others could back into a hammerhead on either side of this terminus and head back out that way. At this point in time, we don't know the position. There's not been full cost estimates and everything developed. But either one of those options is viable at this time. The other thing we wanted to point out was that because of the presence of the house, or the houses on Ohio, the applicant's design engineer was not able to get Lakeway Drive to line up across the street from Baroque Lane. And so the city's subdivision regulations say, whenever practical, you should have streets on opposing sides line up with each other. If they don't, they should not be offset by less than a hundred and fifty feet. And so the two streets here are offset from each other by one hundred and fifty feet. And so that meets the design standards in the subdivision regulations. You don't want to be so, not lined up, but so close that people are still tempted to try to cut across back and forth. I think the other thing about this is because there's so little, because of the lake, there's going to be so little development and so few places to go east of Ohio that I don't think there's going to be a lot of cross-traffic between Baroque Lane and this property. So in terms of easement and dedication, there's already right of way for Ohio. There was additional right of way dedicated for the hike bike trail next to Ohio. There's already a hundred and fifty feet of drainage right of way for the drainage ditch on the north. And so for new dedications, we'd have the sixty-foot right of way for Lakeway Drive and Evening Bay Drive. And then we would have the emergency access easement. We noted that on the assisted living site, there was a need for easements for fire lines and fire hydrants, and those have been provided here and here on the plat. So there would be a public line along here and then stubs coming in here to serve hydrants. And the applicant's engineer has provided hydrants for those, or easements for those extensions. So we've kind of summarized for you the various improvements that would be needed. The phasing plan is also attached in your report. And so the first phase would be to bring this street in to that, to this property line. We'll just wait till it stops moving. Let you see it for yourself. So there is a phasing plan. This is the plan for Phase One. And then Phase Two would be done at a later time. And those are set up in a way so that all the water and sewer improvements needed for the assisted living facility can be done. And then for Phase Two, the street would be completed and additional sewer tie-ins for the townhomes and apartments. The water line loop would be put in upfront, so in Phase Two, there wouldn't be no additional water line improvements. The applicant, in this case, Mr. Byquist, has filed a request seeking to utilize special assessment financing for these improvements. And that will be considered by the City Commission shortly. In terms of covenants, we've not seen or heard whether the applicant is proposing any sort of covenants for the townhome area. We would request that that be something clarified by Mr. Byquist today, whether he has plans to do that. But we do, from our standpoint, believe that all policy and technical issues have been addressed. There's a few surveying items that we received from the city and county surveyors that we'll share with the Cobb Valley Surveyor that need to be addressed before this is recorded. But we think it's in order for your consideration today, subject to the conditions that we've outlined on Page eleven and twelve of your report. In the alternative, if you don't think this is ready for action today, you could postpone consideration and let staff and the applicant know what additional information you think is needed to reach a decision. Or in the alternative, if you don't think that our standards for infrastructure connectivity have been met, then you could deny this final plat citing what criteria you don't think have been met. But I think the only thing that makes this a little different is that there were cost recovery fees for a water line and a drainage impact fee to drain into the sand pit, as opposed to usually we're discussing a detention pond and onsite detention, and that would not be required here. So I guess the two things we would clarify, ask Mr. Byquist about would be addressing, whether he stopped changing the street names. And I think clarification on whether he plans to have any restrictive or protective covenants for the apartment or the townhome area. So with that, staff would be open to any questions. We can go back and look at any drawings that you want to refer back to, or we can hear from the applicant.
Okay, any questions for staff?
My question is on the addressing part of it.
Yes.
Would it make more sense to wait on that to, I mean, because if you look at the grand scheme of things, it actually more closely is off of the Evening Bay Drive than it would be Ohio.
Well, actually, Mr. Byquist, I mean, he owns this. This is actually part of his. So his driveway, this is his driveway to the house. So he's going to have a mailbox out here, not here. And this is, I mean, while he could, if this someday is built, he could access his home here. Today, at least as of right now, his driveway and access to his property is here. It was given the twenty-six oh one address because just this whole, he owned everything and the whole parcel was that. But what we're looking at is that we need to have, so this should, based on our addressing flow, this should be twenty-six oh one here. The office building should be something like twenty-six twenty-five. And then this would be twenty-six forty-five and twenty-six fifty-five, which with this here, the main reason that we are talking about addressing and doing it now is that we need to check in the building permit for the assisted living facility. In order to do that, it has to have an address, and we'd like to give it twenty-six oh one. But to do that, Mr. Byquist has to give up twenty-six oh one. So that's the reason for doing it. It's not that whatever we end up with, he could someday have the home addressed off Evening Bay Drive. But for now, since his driveway connection and mail delivery is coming from here, it makes sense that this is twenty-six forty-five, fifty-five, to be either sixty-five or seventy-five to come back here. And so we would like to free up twenty-six oh one to use it for the assisted living.
Can you go back to the plating? So on this one, so Block One, Lot One, where the assisted living's going in. So I get that being the first lot, the next lot coming down below, the commercial one. Now, the front of that, is that actually not going to be off of Lakeway Drive instead of off of Ohio Street? So would that not be addressed along that street?
Well, what we've generally seen, and especially, we don't know if it's going to be an insurance office or a dental office or whatever, but this is Ohio, this is all one lot. This lot has frontage on Ohio Street. And most likely, any tenant that's going to be in a building here is going to want to have an Ohio Street address because he'll be more identifiable. So when I think of, if you go, say, the New Horizons Dental Clinic, that's at Brock Road and Ohio Street. Their front door faces Brock Road. But when we asked them, would you like to have a Brock Road address or a South Ohio address? They said, we want to have a South Ohio address, even though our door faces Brock Road, because everyone knows where South Ohio is and no one knows where Brock Road is.
Right. Okay. That makes sense. So in reality, off of the Lakeway Drive, there would only be three properties?
Yeah, these would either be addressed off of Lakeway or it'd be addressed off Evening Bay, depending how this, but these would be addressed off Evening Bay Drive. If this keeps growing this way, it's going to keep the twenty-six oh one address. If for some reason, there's like a set of cottages or something that are accessed separately, this would probably have a Lakeway Drive address. But what we're looking for now is just to be able to have the addressing sequences as the numbers get larger as you go south.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go, Stan, we're going to go, we're going to go with the Lakeway Drive and Evening Bay Drive? Not Stan Byquist Byway or something like that?
Correct. Stan Byquist, twenty-six oh one, South Ohio. Sorry. Sorry for the confusion on the street names, but those are my final names, if you'll accept them. Answer a couple other questions. The covenants, I plan on having covenants for the townhome lots. But right now, since they're not going in on the first phase, I want to see how things change in the building community before I put covenants on something that's not feasible right now, I guess I'll say. So that will happen in Phase Two. When we complete the street, then the covenants will be turned in and be up to date. The commercial lot, you have, you discussed having it on Ohio. The address at my personal home, it also carries three corporations with it. Lakeview, Quahmetto Estates, Magnolia Hills Estates. And you're talking about a lot, or to change state and federal records on all my personal, plus all those corporations. Is there any way I could keep my address and give the new facility there, the memory center? You know, another one above it, a three, a nineteen?
Well, when you-
Four, sorry, be three on that side or a five or something.
Yeah, I mean, mostly what we concern about is nine-one-one and emergency response. And so just for everyone's benefit, we have maps. And then we have, you know, a certain distance south of Magnolia is the twenty-five-hundred block. And so reserves at Prairie Glen is twenty-five fifteen. The office building there is twenty-five twenty-five. And the breakpoint where the twenty-six-hundred block starts is right here. Could we address the assisted living facility as twenty-six oh five? Yes, we could. However, if there's some sort of emergency call and the call is for twenty-six oh one, the emergency response is going to be expecting that the twenty-six oh one is somewhere north or in the vicinity of twenty-six oh five, since the addressing gets larger as you go south. So we're just pointing out that from a sequencing standpoint, having twenty-six oh one at the end, instead of at the beginning, is going to cause confusion. At this point in time, Mr. Byquist is not, his residence is not in the city limits. And so from a nine-one-one dispatch standpoint, it's not going to have city police or city fire dispatched to that location. But from an emergency response standpoint, there is not an expectation that an addressing would go from twenty-six forty-five to twenty-six fifty-five to twenty-six oh one. The sequence is for the numbers to get bigger as you go south. And in Stone Lake, they're in the twenty-seven and twenty-eight hundred block. So yes, you already have twenty-six oh one. But we're going to have to, if you retain twenty-six oh one, then we're going to have to work with you to get appropriate signage or something out at Ohio that somehow alerts people that the addresses are out of sequence.
If I could keep my address, I would gladly do that, then have to change all state and federal records for everything.
Dean, is there any way that that block, that, you're twenty-six oh one, right?
Correct.
Is there any way to extend that twenty-five-hundred block to include those? And then it's that road, is that not, I mean-
Well, we have to look at what's on the other, so as you go across this way in the city and in the Twin Oaks area and here, this line right here, everything here is twenty-six hundred. And then we have the twenty-five-hundred block here and then this big jump. So yes, could we make this something like twenty-five eighty-five or something like that? Yes, but it doesn't help the fact that this is going to be twenty-six hundred something and this is twenty-six forty-five fifty-five one. It's out of sequence.
And the reason-
So, yeah, just, it would, if you made this all, I don't know, if, I guess if you looked at the street that you live on, like I live on Chalamar and I'm at twenty-one sixty, and you look across the street, it's twenty-one sixty-one. If we decided, well, we're going to make the two sides of the street opposite. So even though this is all twenty-six hundred, we're going to make this twenty-five hundred and start twenty-six hundred here. It's going to be confusing to have something in the twenty-five-hundred block or twenty-six hundred block on this side and the twenty-five-hundred block on this side. So the best course of action would be to make this twenty-six oh five or something along that line. Make this twenty-six twenty-five, and then- line, make this 2625, and then have this clearly denoted out at the street that this is 2601 and that it's, it's really out of sequence.
I, I would gladly do that than, than have to change all the records, what, whatever the city require.
Just throwing it out there, is there any way you just address those, like the nursing home, a Lakeway address rather than an Ohio?
I, Jeff may be able to speak for them, but they're, they're going to have, uh, their main entrance off of Ohio.
Okay.
So, and, and I know that's extremely important to them.
Okay.
The, the visibility.
So currently, because it, his residence was in the county, wasn't annexed in, the 2601 worked. The two properties that still aren't annexed in, they have the higher number because-
There, the, as the counties, they started participating in, I mean, we had, we had, for a while, we had county roads that weren't named. There were a number of things. The county has gradually, um, done things with addressing and with street naming and all those things in recent times that they didn't do before. And when, back in 2000, when this was being discussed, this, there was just, this entire parcel was owned by Mr. Byquist and because it included property up here, it just had a 2601 address. So when his house was built, his house was given the address that the entire parcel had. We didn't really look at it till I met with the county planner and determined that the county had gone in and addressed this as 45 and 55 in the 2600 block and that it just puts this out of sequence. But if, if we can get this, this will still show up as 2601 in, in the 911, but we would just need something here, um, that would tell a 911 responder that that is the driveway for 2601. And if we can, we can, we can make the rest of this work by making this 2605 and 2625 and keeping these the same. It's just that because this is out of sequence, we would just need something there, um, that would tell a responder that that, someone responding is not going to expect 2601 to occur after 2645 and 2655, so.
No, they're not. And I would agree that it would make it a lot easier for the corporations and everything else to keep the address that way. But I don't think that no matter what you do, signage and anything else, that it's ever going to make sense because you're going to have change in staff or ambulance, fire department, police departments. Because I know in situations currently within the city where you have the older part of town, where you have a north and a south, and they're labeled 101 North and 101 South, and they start right next to each other and they go to the wrong address constantly. So I, I feel for you on that part of it, but I would not be in favor of changing the numbering sequence. I think if we're going to do it, that address has to change into the sequence with the rest of the street.
And I, I agree with that as well as, like I had brought up earlier, my concern is, you know, in the plat, we show a leg of Evening Bay Drive there. If, if emergency services were to turn off of Ohio onto the driveway and then actually hit paved street before getting back to driveway again, are they going to be thinking that they missed the house between Ohio Street and Evening Bay Drive?
Yeah, and that may, that, that may become an issue when Evening Bay Drive actually gets constructed.
Can you bring that back up?
What part of it was yet again? So along the bottom of the page there where the number four is at-
Right.
That's the driveway currently.
Right.
And so right halfway, right there is where Evening Bay Drive is actually a paved road because that would be the connector over to the subdivision to the south.
Right.
And so I'm thinking, you know, if emergency services were to pull off of Ohio, between Ohio and Evening Bay, would they think they missed the house because there was nothing off of that driveway?
Right. Because out to Ohio Street out here, that's going to be listed as what? Is that all Evening Bay Drive?
No, it's just going to be private property that's owned by Mr. Byquist. It's going to continue to be owned by him and be his driveway, subject to an easement for emergency access purposes. But it's, it's, it's going to continue to be his property.
So when Evening Bay Drive is completed, that still stays as his private drive that's connected to a public street on?
Yeah, that's, that's going to stay that way because that's an emergency access easement to get in the north side of Stone Lake.
And, and for what it's worth, my, my future plan, and, and, you know, take a little bit, is to actually work with the city and push that, uh, emergency access clear back so that can be more lots built on the south side of the pit. So I'll have to annex more land in and go through the whole process to bring the rest in, but that's my future plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jeff Mace with Comper Realty, 157 South 7th. I had a question relative to the addressing. Dean, I heard you say that with him being in the county now, 911, I mean, I completely get the sequencing and as much of a, I mean, it can be done, but we also got Cedarhurst ready to pull permit and would need to be done like right now to accommodate. Is it such that, that Mr. Byquist could, could continue to work with staff and get that worked out over the course of the next year with returns and all that and change of it? I've done it before and I know what's involved. Or does it have to happen right now, given the fact that if he dialed 911, they're not coming out there anyway right now because he's in the county? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's all coded by whether, it's geocoded by whether your address is in the county or in the city. And if, if it's, you're in the county, you're going to have a rural fire district sent out. And if you're in the city, you're going to have the city fire department sent out. So we work hard so that there's a record of that. Our immediate challenge is in order to check in a building permit for the assisted living facility, we have to have an address for it. And if 2601 is not available, then we'll have to come up with a different addressing sequence. And so we can't, we can't have, can't have a building permit without an address for the site that is being built on. And by sequence, it should be 2601. If it can't be 2601, it will have to be something else.
So if it's 2605, because he currently has 2601 with the condition that he's got a year timeframe or whatever to make changes within his corporations and other, everything else, because I agree with Mr. Mace, it's not going to happen overnight to make those changes. We would still have an address at 2605 on Ohio Street. They could then build, go through, gives him time to make the changes. And then within anything else, like we do limitations or conditional uses, that we give him 12 months to make all of those changes. And at that point in time, that address can be changed within the county.
Yeah, there's all kinds of different points at which the address could be changed.
Does this satisfy you? I mean, does that get you what you need?
Yeah, the immediate thing is that we, we have a building permit that we've accepted and checked in at 2601, South Ohio. 2601, South Ohio is not available unless Mr. Byquist gives it up. He says he doesn't want to give it up, so we'll have to come up with a different addressing plan. And get it checked in under a different address and come up with a different plan.
I actually see Stan's dilemma, I mean, it's logistical, I mean, holy mackerel. I mean, that's-
Until you dial 911.
Yeah. Yeah, and, no, this is not a 90-day turnaround period on none of this stuff on here, so.
No, but I, I could-
I think we go back and look at the, you know, look at the thing, you know, if it's 2605, let's make it 2605 for the, uh, assisted living so we can get that permit done for them and get that going so we're not dragging our feet on that. And then this look at, you know, whatever you can do within that period of time to see if we can't either, either way on what we need to do.
Try and get things straightened out one way or another. Okay, I could agree with that. And the rest of the conditions, I'm fine with.
Well, good, thank you, Mr. Mace. That's a good idea.
Is there any more questions for the applicant?
I don't think that I-
Thank you, Commissioners.
Do we have anybody on, any, anybody, well, nobody else in the audience, anybody online that would like to comment on this?
We do have the developer of the assisted living facility online. I'm not sure if they have anything they'd like to add or not, Mr. Dwyer.
Nothing really, uh, you know, we're not trying to steal Stan's address, obviously, but, uh, whatever we can do to just get a number applied. We definitely would like to have an Ohio address, but we're not, you know, dead set on any number. So whatever number we decide with, I think we're fine as long as it's on Ohio and, um, you know, we're, uh, ready to get going here pretty soon, so.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the, uh, commission then for a recommendation?
I would move that we approve application P 21 dash 3A filed by Stan Byquist with the recommendations from the staff on page 11 and 12 with the addition of that Mr. Byquist will give up 2601 as the address within an agreeable timeframe. And I think probably nine to 12 months probably makes sense to be able to allow him to do that and get everything switched out so that they can go with the 2605 or whatever's agreed on for the assisted living facility.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Bernhardt, you had the second, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any more, any other, any unfinished or other business? Dean, do we have anything?
Well, we just would, we informed you that the, uh, the city commission approved the plan for the Cedarhurst facility and the zoning change on first reading. The project was annexed into the city, um, and second reading already, so it's, it's now fully within the city. And, um, as far as upcoming business, we're going to be meeting on the 16th and on the, we'll have the first meeting in December as well. We have applications, um, filed for those dates. Um, so there's not, I don't think there's going to be any breathers through the, the rest of the year.
I was just curious, has there been a, have they started the permit process for the apartment complex by Menards or the hotel by the mall?
Uh, they have not. There is, um, there is, within that subdivision, what are called reciprocal easement agreements and that, those reciprocal easement agreements, which are not unusual in developments like that, usually give the major anchor tenant, um, veto power over uses within that area. And a committee of representing Menards, Inc., approved that use. And then a second committee did not approve that use. So at this point, they're unable to move forward because Menards has not approved their use of the property. And that is, that has happened, um, in previous cases, and it, it just depends on the order in which things are done. Um, we have a, a little shopping center, um, with five guys and, and different tenants there at the corner of Schilling and Knight Street. That was approved twice by the planning commission, the site plan for a Murphy Oil Convenience Store. Both times Lowe's vetoed that use at that corner. And so even though the planning commission approved their plan, Lowe's had veto authority of what went there and they wouldn't approve the plan. So sometimes when we bring things to you, we don't know whether the, the main tenant has approved or disapproved of them. And so it's, it's really a private matter. So if the plans meet all of our requirements, we'll, we'll bring them to you and they're approved and then they'll have to work it out with. Um, so in the development over there on South Knight Street, Coles has veto power over everything else that goes in there. And so, um, at one point, there was a plan for a Ross Dress for Less store south of Coles and Coles said no. And it ended up in the mall. So those, those are things, so that's where it stands now. We have not issued a building permit or even have an application for the apartments by Menards because the top committee at Menards has not approved that use in that location.
Got you.
Kay.
I guess I have one more question. I don't know if it's related to this, but the river project?
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, we've, it kind of was, it was talked about, it was, you know, the, during our end of the year meeting for budgeting purposes and all of that, it was on and it was approved and going forward. And I know pandemic hit where we were supposed to get started and then, you know, in 19 and then we had 20, but do, does anybody have any idea of where that's at or where it's ongoing? I mean, we would assume that was going to help with our-
Well, they, they had a, uh, they had a study session on that last night with the city commission with Representative, the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Army Corps of Engineers is, um, in a position, there's different levels that they can participate. Some range from 50-50 to 80-20 cost sharing, where the Army Corps of Engineers would pay up to 80% of the costs of the channel enhancements and those types of things. Right now, they're, the car, the corps' funding source for that is dry. There's not a source of funds so that even if they, if they had an agreement with us that they'd pay 80% of the cost, they don't have the 80% right now to move forward. What we do have is that we have a partial grant from KDOT. And that grant is not, it's for trail, not for river enhancements itself, but it's to construct a trail essentially from Ohio Street along the north side of the river channel behind the soccer, Y soccer fields and around the back of the Y and enhanced hike bike trail there. So we're in the process of laying that out and acquiring easements for that. And that will probably be the first leg of anything that's river-related that people will actually see. And then as we mentioned, there's, um, probably be moving forward with a traffic steady or safety steady at that central mall intersection. And when that is decided upon and we've hired somebody and have a timeframe, we'll report back to you on that.
Okay, I don't see anybody here for public forum or anybody online that would like to speak or say anything?
We do have the applicant of the condition use permit, Samantha, still online. I don't know if she has anything she'd like to add or not, but if, if not, then we don't have anyone else from the public to speak.
Okay, entertain a motion for adjournment?
I would move the adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We'll see everybody November the 16th at four o'clock here.
Won't be here.